Good evening and welcome to the September 2nd, 2025 City Council Regular Hybrid Meeting. I'm Mayor Saleem Neese. This evening's hybrid City Council meeting is being brought to you in person and by Zoom, and we're also broadcasting live on MITV Channel 21 and on the city's YouTube channel. Welcome and thanks for joining us tonight. Council members, please have your microphones turned off for roll call. City Clerk Andrea Larson, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Andrell?
Here.
Councilmember Becker?
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds? Oh, there's Councilmember Reynolds. We're calling roll, Councilmember Reynolds.
I'm here.
Councilmember Wyker has not arrived yet. Councilmember Weinberg?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Here.
And Mayor Neese?
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And for the record, please note that Andrell and Reynolds are joined remotely. Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're in council chambers, please stand and face the flag. If you're joined by video, please turn off your video to show the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we now move to approval of tonight's agenda. There's no questions, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
So moved.
All right, moved by Councilmember Becker, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Neese?
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker is still not here. Councilmember Becker?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
And Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is AB 6759, recognition for the MIYFS Foundation. We welcome Chief of Administration Ali Speets and YFS Administrator Derek Franklin. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Deputy Mayor, members of the council. My name is Derek Franklin, Administrator for the city's Department of Youth and Family Services. Before you tonight for consideration during special business is Agenda Bill 6759, recognition for the Mercer Island Youth and Family Services Foundation. Recommended action tonight is to recognize the MIYFS Foundation's contribution to the Youth and Family Services Department in the city of Mercer Island by approving Resolution Number 1681. Started in the '70s, YFS, with grassroots efforts that recognized the need in our community for behavioral health services, support for foster families, and support for islanders struggling with basic needs. YFS, however, struggled to achieve stable funding. The affluent demographic of Mercer Island disqualified YFS from typical funding streams, yet issues of mental health, substance use, senior support, housing and food security remained. To maintain YFS services and provide for the critical behavioral health needs of the community, a solid foundation of funding would be critical. The city stepped up and integrated YFS as a department of the city unlike any other city in the state. However, this alone could not solve YFS's funding challenges. So the city invested in growing the thrift store to fund YFS, and yet the need for additional school counselors, support for the island's large senior population, and the need to prevent evictions and support food security again, even in a wealthy suburb like Mercer Island, continued to grow. It became clear that for YFS to meet the demands for services in the community, some of the island's private resources would need to be tapped. This is where the MIYFS Foundation has stepped in and since 1989, has served the community by raising funds to support YFS services and the community at large. Today, MIYFS Foundation has grown into a community institution, hosting large annual events, being a presence at many school and community events, and always focused exclusively on raising funds for youth and family services. Their support has directly impacted the number of counselors in our schools, services available to seniors, emergency support for families in need, and provided crucial baseline financial support for general YFS operations, those funds that are sometimes the most difficult to raise. The Foundation's financial contributions have grown over the years to $515,000 annually, and in fact, later in tonight's agenda, the city council will note that the Foundation is poised to increase that amount yet again, up to $580,000, to respond to the need to support equitable salary increases for YFS staff in Agenda Bill 6764. Led by their Executive Director, Amy French, the MIYFS Foundation is a remarkable group of community volunteers who dedicate their time, their resources, and their talents to support YFS, which then in turn supports every Mercer Island resident. Let me read the Mercer Island, City of Mercer Island, Resolution 1681. For the audience attended, then I'll invite members of the Foundation to come up and speak. Resolution 1681, a resolution of the City of Mercer Island, Washington, recognizing the Mercer Island Youth and Family Services Foundation's contributions to the Youth and Family Services Department in the city of Mercer Island. Whereas, the Mercer Island Youth and Family Services Foundation, a 501(c)(3) organization, was established in 1989 to increase private funding for the city of Mercer Island Department of Youth and Family Services, and is comprised of a volunteer board of directors from the community, supported by a paid executive director, Amy French, and engagement specialist Lisa Swanson, and, whereas, the Foundation's mission is to raise funds to support YFS services so it can provide quality human services to all islanders by harnessing the financial contributions of YFS supporters through innovative fundraising strategies, including back-to-school fundraisers, holiday tree lot, annual breakfast with over 500 participants, major donor development, and many school and community-based efforts, and, whereas, in 2023, the city entered into a new four-year funding agreement that formalized the Foundation's increased annual contributions to YFS at $515,000 gifted to the city for services annually, and in 2024, the city accepted additional funds to support cost increases related to city staff classification and compensation-related salary increases, and, whereas, the Foundation's financial giving has directly supported YFS and city efforts to maintain or expand YFS staffing for middle school counselors, senior staff, and to help rebuild YFS staffing levels after pandemic-related reductions, and, whereas, the Foundation historically has responded to emergent community needs identified by YFS and outside their regular giving with additional donations to YFS programs, including the back-to-school supplies program, holiday meal and gift programs, food security efforts, food pantry and pandemic-era food car distribution program, and additional emergency assistance needs, including preschool and daycare scholarships, and, whereas, the Foundation's historic public-private partnership with the city has played a significant role in the sustainability of the YFS department and the positive impact of the behavioral health and basic need services it provides to Mercer Island residents across the lifespan. This has been signed by the mayor. I'd just like to make a final comment to say thank you on behalf of YFS staff and the people we serve, many of you gathered here tonight. Without your support, what we do just wouldn't be possible, and the fact that your support comes from inside, it comes from the community, and it's given with heart, that just means so much. I'd like to thank you and invite, and he went up, Amy perhaps, to come say a few words and kick it back to the council, the mayor and deputy mayor. Amy French?
Well, I didn't know I was speaking tonight, but just a quick thank you. You know, historically, we've worked together with the city and with YFS for over 35 years, and that's quite a history, and it shows the continuing commitment of this community to bring these important services, essential services, to the community, and really appreciate Derek and his hard work and his team's hard work and my board for all the support. So thank you and thanks for the recognition.
Thank you.
First, I'd love to say thank you to Amy and Lisa for all their hard work as our employees at the Foundation. But I think more importantly, I want to say a few things about our community. I think having YFS be part of Mercer Island and all they do for Mercer Island is a tremendous resource, and I'm so, so proud of this community and thankful that we have it. And moreover, it is so super special that we have the support of the community from all my fellow board members here who volunteer their time to raise the funds, to all the donors on Mercer Island who really pony up and give because they know how important YFS is, and I am so pleased that we were able to meet the increased needs that the city had based on the salary increases, and I am very proud of our community for doing that. So, again, thank you, YFS, and thank you all of my board here who support us, and Amy and Lisa again.
Thank you. And for the record, could you just state your name and title?
Sorry. Cindy Getzmann, President, current president of MIYFS Foundation Board.
Perfect, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, council, any questions, any comments? Okay. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Yeah, you know, there are so many times where we, you know, the city encourages people to reach out to YFS. You know, sometimes it's for something small, sometimes it's for something large, you know, either a small challenge or a really big problem, and YFS is able to help them, and that's great, but the truth is that those services are not available without the work of the Foundation. And I just want to say thank you. I don't think that's enough, but I do want to say thank you for all the work that you do. You know, so much of the work that you do is done behind the scenes to get things ready, to get things going, and provide those resources, you know, to people who really need them and may never know of the work that went in behind the scenes to do that, and that's, you know, one of the best forms of giving. So thank you for all that you do. I know, I know it's a lot, and thank you. Thank you for all those efforts.
Thank you. Councilmember Weinberg?
There we go. So why did I echo that for everyone in the Youth and Family Services Foundation Board and everyone in the community who volunteers and who gives generously every year at the breakfast and the holiday tree lot and the recycling event, and, or just goes directly to the Foundation's website, thank you. Your contributions are making a huge difference in the lives of islanders every day, and every islander is immensely proud of what Youth and Family Services accomplishes, and that simply would not be possible without the hard work of the YFS Foundation. Thank you again.
Thank you. Councilmember Andrell?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you again to the Foundation, the volunteers, the community, and MIYFS. Not a lot of people on the island get direct services from MIYFS, but everybody in the community benefits from having this support network, and so thank you for just making Mercer Island a better place to live, and I appreciate everything that all of you do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let me just add that, you know, during, during the pandemic, we found out right away how funding, how important funding was to YFS. When we had to shut down the thrift shop and we lost all of the revenue, which was over a million dollars of net proceeds that were going directly to YFS, the Foundation stepped in and helped us relaunch programs, and not a lot of folks know that the funding for YFS is coming from thrift shop revenues, general fund subsidies, and from the YFS Foundation. And if it weren't for any one of those three pieces, this whole thing breaks, and it is such a rare rarity to have a social services organization embedded within a municipality that is delivering social services citywide, all the way from school counseling to food, to senior assistance, to rent assistance, a lot of services that this community would be devoid of. We have a parks levy and we dedicate funding through taxpayers, increase taxes to parks, but we don't have that for social services. And so there's going to come a time in the future of Mercer Island where we're just not going to be able to keep up. I know that the Foundation is doing everything, is putting their heart and soul into the planning that it takes to continue to raise the money, to keep up with inflation, which has been incredible through, throughout the kind of exit of the pandemic, and I just want to thank all of you for your work that you did, you've done for our kids. I've got a 10-year-old. You know, these counselors and the rest of the social services stack, we talk about fentanyl, we talk about drugs, we talk about all the things that are happening in the community that YFS addresses that citywide, we would just not have the resources or the trained staff to be able to address, so it really does mean a lot. So thank you again for that. Council, is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 1681, recognizing the MIYFS Foundation's contributions to the Youth and Family Services Department in the city of Mercer Island?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Weinberg, seconded by Councilmember Reynolds. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker is still absent. Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Mayor Neese?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell?
Aye.
And Councilmember Becker?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, motion passes. Time is now 5:15. The council's going to be in recess for five minutes while we take some pictures.
Okay, welcome back to the September 2nd, 2025 City Council meeting. And we were in recess for five minutes, taking photos for the M I Y F S item. And next up, we have the C manager's report, for which we welcome C manager Jesse Bond.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of our council, and welcome back from the summer. Let me getting all sorts of things here on my screen, just a second. All right, there we go, next slide, please, Casey. Counsel, this is just a look ahead to our upcoming meetings in September. Your next meeting is September 16th. The boards and commissions are back to work as well this month. The utility board is meeting next week on September 9th. And the planning commission is also meeting next week on September 10th. Next slide, please. I have a range of updates for you. The first one is some good news I shared with you in the email on Friday. We're really excited to announce that the Roanoke Playground is back open and ready for play. You may recall that the 2022 Parks Levy includes funds to replace most of our playgrounds over the life of the levy, and we are well underway with that work. At Roanoke, if you've stopped by, you'll note that we replaced the equipment. We improved accessibility with a new play area surfacing. We have a new ADA parking stall and improved accessible pathways and a picnic table. We also did some work below the surface on things like drainage that you can't see, but I promise you it's there. A few more punch list items to do, including some landscaping work, but we're happy to say the fences are down and kids and families are welcome to visit the new playground. The next up is, I believe, the First Hill Park Playground, which is in design right now. Next slide, please. Completely transitioning topics, and I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail on this because Amanda Kaver Camp is here and she has a presentation in just a little bit that will go into more detail on the I-90 project coming up. But just a reminder, if you've seen our communications, we are heavy messaging to the Mercer Island community about the upcoming eastbound I-90 Expansion Joint Replacement Project. This is going to be 16 days of major eastbound impacts, which really is going to make it difficult for the island. Not much we can do except plan ahead. I think the main thing I want to mention is for at least eight days of that closure, we are going to be down to just one eastbound on-ramp. So, and that will be in-town center. The East Mercer Way on-ramp will be closed and the HOV on-ramp will be closed. Your staff team has been working closely with WashDOT on this for a couple of months now. We have plans for Washington State Patrol to be out, helping our police department direct traffic. Lots going on behind the scenes, so I won't steal all of Amanda's thunder, but you're going to see us hitting this weekly with the community and inviting people to reconsider their plans to travel east during that 16-day window. All right, next slide, please. Switching back to Capitol Project Updates, Island Crestway Crosswalk Improvements. You probably noticed the pattern now that when school is out, we are doing our projects at Island Crestway to make sure we're not impacting the schools there. Last week, we completed two concrete sidewalk pores at Southeast 62nd Street and the Island Park Elementary driveway. The sidewalks and new crosswalks were fully open for use prior to school starting, and now we're finishing up some of our punch list items. Next slide, please. August was supposed to be a time of refreshing and taking a little time off with families, but we had unfortunately a couple of major water main breaks on the south end of the island, and it was highly, highly disruptive. I want to, first of all, thank the residents and the community on the south end for being just so kind and patient with our teams. It's really that wonderful attitude that makes our jobs so much easier. I'm really pleased to share, City Council, that we completed the replacement of 220 feet of water main last week. It was a pretty big water main rupture, and it kind of kept running in the pipe. So our project included completing all the things we do when we replace a pipe of that size, pressure testing, flushing, and our water quality testing procedures. We were also able to get one lane of East Mercer Way reopened just ahead of a school going back, which I think has really helped the school district with their bus routes and the community members that live down there get around. We have some more work to do before that road fully reopens, and we have five homes that have been on temporary water service since this all started, so we're working on transitioning them back. And again, I want to give a huge thank you to all of them for their patience. We even have a neighbor-to-neighbor connection where we were able to put in temporary service from one home to another. So just a lot of kindness, and it's great to be a Mercer Islander and see everyone working together when something like this happens. All right, next slide, please. Couple upcoming events, as I mentioned, we have a covering a wide range here, so wanted to invite you to stop in here to the Community Center. We are proud to be hosting with MyVal, showcasing the work of Mercer Island photographers. So as I understand it, all the photos on display here were taken by our own community members. This show will be on display through October 17th, and the artist reception is tomorrow from 5:00 to 7:00. The start of the school year and end of summer, we are super excited to announce and remind you that the Mercer Island Chamber is bringing back Mercer Island Art and Cork 2025 again this year. Moved to Saturday, so it's this Saturday, September 6th, 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. here in the town center. I have not checked, but I heard tickets were selling really, really fast, so if you don't have a ticket yet, you better get one soon. All right, a couple shout-outs here as we round out the presentation. Tonight and at the next council meeting, I'll give you a recap of the summer events, but tonight I wanted to start just with a little overview of summer camps. Counsel, as you know, the Recreation Division here, based out of the Community Center, coordinates with a variety of providers to provide summer camps to our community. This year, we saw more than 1,300 kids participating in 10 different camps, who sit here at the Community Center and across the parks on the island. My youngest went to bike camp and learned to ride without training wheels, so that was a big milestone for our family this summer. We have lots of returning camp partners, I won't read them all, but many of our programs grew, it was a very successful summer. We want to say thank you to our recreation team and to all of our partners that come together to provide the summer programming for the community. All right, and last but certainly not least, we didn't want this to go unrecognized. Council member Weinberg earned his Certificate of Municipal Leadership. Certificate of Municipal Leadership, sorry about that, Ted, from the Association of Washington Cities. He just completed the certificate over the summer, and we got an announcement while we were both on vacation, so congratulations. This reflects dedication to many training sessions and a lot of time that I know you've put in since becoming a council member. So on behalf of the city, thank you, and congratulations, Council Member Weinberg. That is all, thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next item of business is appearances, which is an opportunity for anyone to speak to the City Council on any item except items requiring a public hearing, any quasi-judicial matters, or campaign-related matters. Tonight's agenda will include in-person public appearances and remote public appearances via Zoom. Individuals wishing to address the council may do so in person or by Zoom or telephone, provided they register with the clerk by 4:00 p.m. today. When it's your turn to speak, you'll be called by name. Remarks must be addressed to the councils as a whole, not to individual council or staff members. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or who becomes boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the council may be requested to leave the meeting. Please speak audibly, state your name and city of residence for the record, there'll be a timer on the screen. You'll have three minutes to speak, and when your time is ended, I'll thank you for your comments or move to the next speaker or item of business. Staff, please call the first speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First speaker tonight is Debbie Gerstel.
Hi there, ooh, that's loud. I'm Debbie Gerstel, I live in Mercer Island, is that what you needed?
Yep.
I'm here to talk about e-bike safety today. The rules on Mercer Island are not comprehensive, and the ones we have aren't clear. This confusion, I think, is putting people at risk, and I think we need to do something about it. So I propose three things. One, we get clear, consistent rules for e-bike usage. Two, we get visible signage to communicate those rules, and this is important because without it, cyclists just feel like they have a license to ride wherever they want. So signage is definitely needed. And three, we need enforcement, so something that the police, if and when the situation happens, can do something about it to protect everyone. A lot of people think this is about blaming kids, but it isn't. It's actually about protecting them. Many of the risky behaviors we're seeing come from middle schoolers who simply don't know the rules of the road. Without clear rules, signage, education, and enforcement, how can we expect them to? Whether it's because kids are doing pop-a-wheelies on 24th Street, seen that lots, or they're riding through the grassy area at Mercer Dell Park, seen that a bunch too. If and when there's an accident, the kid and the driver or the pedestrian will both be traumatized, to say the least. So will I, I dread the day, and it's just bound to happen. People, and frankly, dogs are in danger because kids on e-bikes are zipping through places that they shouldn't be, and at speeds they shouldn't be, mostly because of bicycle modifications. Personally, I was playing catch with my little 20-pound dog at Mercer Dell, and three kids almost ran her over in the grassy field. It was terrifying to both of us. I was also recently walking on this small trail through the woods, the single little narrow trail, from First Hill where I live down to Meoposto, and a bike almost hit me. I have never in 10 years of living there and walking that trail about twice a day seen a regular bicycle on that path. It's just too narrow and it's a dirt trail, but now e-bikes are on it. So the e-bike community has clearly evolved faster than the city rules and signage in parks. In Medina, I'm sure you guys know this, there are signs that read, "E-bikes are not allowed in any of Medina's parks, regardless of whether the motor is engaged." They say it's because e-bikes can cause more damage to park landscaping due to their increased weight and tire width. If that's the rationale we need to use to stop e-bikes from zipping through the grassy fields of our park, I'm all for it. And I realize we're not the only city with this problem, but we are a small, tight-knit community and should be able to act quickly. At a minimum, we should be able to put signage in our parks indicating where e-bikes can ride and where they can't. It's only a matter of time before tragedy strikes, and I beg you to do something about it. We need rules, we need signage, and we need enforcement. I was going to read some comments from Facebook, but I will skip that.
Feel free to, yeah, you can give those to the city clerk if you'd like, and she'll get them distributed to the council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, who's next?
Our next speaker is Addie Smith.
Well, my name is Addie Smith. Today is September 2nd, and I am speaking before the Mercer Island City Council. This is the same city council with the exception of one new member who collectively voted to terminate the Multifamily Tax Exemption, or MFTE, program that supported providing low-income housing for the people of the city of Mercer Island and state of Washington. They terminated the program after a black woman was targeted in multiple hate crime attacks by whites after she refused to violate housing laws for a white woman. The property management company was allowing white people who did not qualify for low-income housing to live in these MFTE apartments. These same city council members provided millions of dollars in grants and waivers for property owners and property management companies to provide low-income housing to people who otherwise couldn't afford to live on Mercer Island. These are your teachers, police, fire department, grocery store staff, librarians, restaurant servers, and more. The black woman went to the Mercer Island Police for months reporting hate crimes that harmed her and her young daughter. The police refused to write one police report. In October, the former police chief, Ed Holmes, told the black woman, quote, "I am hopeful things will settle down for you soon," end quote. Still refusing to write even one police report. In that same month, two police officers came to her home to serve her with orders of protection from her former employers. They told the judge that they were afraid they'd lose their jobs, and they were afraid for the reputation of the company and needed orders of protection. When the Mercer Island Police served the black woman, she once again begged them to write a police report about the attacks, and they refused. The Mercer Island Police report to these council members, the judge and municipal court report to these council members, the city attorney and prosecutor report to these council members. Mercer Island is actively suppressing these hate crimes to prevent being held accountable for allowing them to happen, for failing to write police reports, and for arresting the black woman who defended herself in one of many attacks. The white woman who attacked her is a convicted felon for trafficking. She also had a gun. Had the black woman not defended herself, she would be dead. In my hand is an order of protection reversing the decision to grant her former employer orders of protection. The judge ruled, quote, "Having listened to the audio of the hearing provided by the trial court, the thrust of the testimony was that witnesses were primarily concerned about the company and its reputation and their employment. There was not substantial evidence presented at the December 6th hearing supporting a conclusion that the appellant engaged in annoying and willful course of conduct. The decision of the trial court granting the orders of protection indicates her together are reversed," end quote. These city council members have lied, their city courts and municipal court staff have lied, their judge has lied, their prosecutor has lied, all to protect.
All right, who's next?
Our next speaker is Norma Bergquist.
Quest, and I live on the north end of Mercer Island in First Hill. And I want to just underscore what Debbie talked about. I think e-bikes are great, I think they're wonderful, I think most kids do a great job. What I will tell you about is an incident that scared the living daylights out of me. With Debbie, I will highlight where I was, we were actually, Southeast 27th Street near Meoposto, if you head west, curbs, and it becomes 74th. At that curving point, before it makes that curve, it's actually the top of a hill. When Debbie and I were pulled off to the side talking along with her son, a kid using the hill and the speed of the bike came whipping down, and I have to tell you, it must have been about 40 miles an hour. And we yelled, "Stop, slow down!" For concern for his life and the life of other people, he swore at us several times, okay, but he went right through all of the signage heading into downtown. So there was a four-way stop at the bottom there, near Meoposto. Had anybody been pulling out, they would have been hit by him, likely, a lot of damage, could have been killed, and he would have been killed. Had anybody been walking, that would have happened. And had anybody like my son, who's learning how to drive, followed the law, inched out, and the kid been hurt, he could have been accused of not doing the right thing, even though he was doing the right thing. This kid is out of control, and there, I thought, well, maybe it's just this one kid, how do we stop him? We didn't even have time, we couldn't record it. We looked up, and there were four more kids, boys, all at the top up there, and they saw us, looking at them, you could tell they were going to do the same thing or something similar. They're using the hill in addition to the motorized vehicle to get the speed, and when they saw us, they kind of went away. This same kid is the same kid that we also saw, Debbie said she saw ripping through the Mercer Dell Park. So there has to be some way that we can keep ourselves safe and this kid safe. So that's the concern.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeff Bender.
Hi, my name is Jeff Bender. I live at 2438 71st Avenue Southeast in the First Hill neighborhood. Good evening, council members and everyone else here. Before I get into the rest of my comments, I would say, the previous comments, they have identified a big problem on the island with these e-bikes, and especially the ones that are not pedal-assisted, the ones where they just have a throttle and zip. There's going to be a big accident one of these days, and I mean, because they're coming behind corners, bushes, and cars are pulling out of driveways, and accidents waiting to happen there. Anyway, the purpose of my parents today is to request that the city develop procedures for establishing a shared street, and actually, this is kind of related to the previous issue. On May 17, Governor Ferguson signed Senate Bill 5595, which establishes shared streets. The law became effective on July 25th. I believe 71st Avenue Southeast meets the definition of a shared street. As my hope, my neighborhood is provided an opportunity to ask the city council for a shared street designation. One noteworthy aspect of this new street designation classification is the street can be posted with a 10-miles-per-hour speed limit, and it doesn't require speed study in the typical street classification process. So it's a really cutting-edge law that was passed by the state, and I think our neighborhood's a good candidate. Before my neighborhood can make its requests, the city needs to establish procedures per this new state law. Please ask city staff to develop the shared street procedures. Also ask city staff to develop a schedule for creating the procedures, and to make the process for street classifications in the city easily accessible on the city's website. And I guess I'll just follow the progress of city action on this matter throughout the year, and thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ashley Klein.
Hi, can you hear me now?
We can.
Hi, everyone, thanks for having me tonight. I just wanted to comment on the e-bike and e-scooter safety with a couple of personal experiences that I've had here on the island, and of course, I'm an island resident. Just last night, I was walking our puppy across a very narrow footbridge where I had no option to go any direction other than forward and back. And sure enough, it was about 9:00 p.m., stark out, and the e-bike comes screaming down the bridge. So I grabbed the puppy, get as far to the side as I can, and start yelling for this person to get off their bike. It was a young person, probably 12 to 14 years old. No clue which neighborhood kid it was, because the headlight was so bright, I couldn't see anything. I'm grateful I wasn't hit, I'm grateful my dog wasn't hit, but I'm obviously very concerned with that type of behavior. Also, in our neighborhood, last year, I was driving home, and I saw a bike in the middle, an e-bike in the middle of the road, but no person. And then as I approached and got out of my car, I realized that the individual was in the gutter across the street, like in the ditch. It was a young man, probably 14, 15 years old, certainly not old enough to be operating any type of motor vehicle. And he had bailed off the bike, I believe, in an accident with no vehicle involved. There wasn't one that I saw, he wasn't able to recall exactly what had happened, but I was able to tell. So it appeared that he came off this gravel trail onto a residential street, probably came close to a car that maybe didn't even see him if he were at the tail end of it. I could see his skid marks, you know, in the gravel, and then, of course, the bike in the road, and him about 15 feet away. So I called 911, and I grabbed his phone. He was bleeding from the head, from his shoulders, his arms, his legs. He was a mess. He looked like he had been in a meat grinder. His headphones were, you know, AirPods were on the ground, so clearly he wasn't able to hear, which is probably why this accident occurred, in addition to speed. And his mother came to get him, and I was absolutely floored that, first, he survived, thank God he was wearing a helmet. I was horrified by the way he spoke to me and his mother, lots of profanity, lots of anger. And I said to her, "Boy, get this kid to the hospital, because either he talks to you like this all the time, and it's totally unacceptable, or he's got a really bad head injury, because this is not normal behavior." So anyways, I encourage you to, you know, help with some signage, and also maybe a campaign in the schools. It would be great to have someone in there talking, someone who's had a traumatic brain injury, who's had a, you know, significant medical event might shake some sense into everyone. Thanks so much, take care.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jim Stanton.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Jim Stanton, I've lived on the south end of the island for over 40 years. I too am alarmed by the activities with e-bikes on the island, but I think that we're going to need a lot more than just signage and enforcement and better rules. We're also, this island, a lot of the conflicts that you hear about online or in the community or in stories like were just previously told, have to do with a lack of infrastructure on the island. This island lags almost every other community around the lake in providing bike lanes, alternatives to keeping kids off sidewalks, or keeping them off the roads. Until we address, addressing infrastructure has got to be part of the solution. The other part is training the kids, and I think that's what some of the previous speakers alluded to, it's a behavioral problem, and just adding additional regulations is not going to address that. One bright spot is that the state is rolling out a statewide bicycle education program that's designed to hit 90% of kids either in elementary school or in the middle school at the end of about five years. It's not on Mercer Island yet, but it will be here. The state funds 100% of all the costs, they provide the bikes, the teacher training, and there's no cost to the school district. So I think regulations are great, I think signs are great, the behaviors got to be fixed, but until we provide infrastructure that keeps, provides alternatives to kids and e-scooters being on sidewalks, or to being in traffic where they shouldn't be, or to being in trails, and have another way to get around, we're going to continue to have these problems despite the regulation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kara King.
Hello, my name is Kara King, and I've lived on this island my entire life in the Mid-Island area. Honorable Mayor Niece and members of the Mercer Island City Council, on behalf of the children, families, faculty, and staff of St. Monica Catholic School, we want to express our heartfelt gratitude for the city of Mercer Island's proclamation and support of our community. In light of the tragic events at Annunciation School in Minneapolis, our community has felt the weight of sorrow and uncertainty that comes when violence strikes a school setting, and we know that we are not alone in this feeling. Your acknowledgement of the importance of safe schools and your recognition of the fundamental right for people to practice their faith without fear or persecution has been deeply meaningful for our students, teachers, and parents. Knowing that the city of Mercer Island stands with us and values both safety and religious freedom, provides reassurance and stability during a time when so many of us have felt shaken, we are especially grateful for the presence and partnership of the Mercer Island Police Department, and we would like to say a special note of thanks to Mayor Niece and interim police chief, Michelle Bennett, for proactively providing more patrols and cover to our school and our back-to-school mass last week. MIPD's visibility and support helped our children and families feel safer as we come to school each day. The knowledge that our city leaders and public safety officers are working together to protect our schools and church affirms to our youngest learners that we are being... affirms to our youngest learners that we are being, that their well-being truly matters. Our students are grateful, our teachers and administrators are grateful, and our whole parish community is grateful. Your proclamation reminds us that Mercer Island is committed, is committed to safeguarding the values of community, security and religious liberty. Thank you, Mayor and council members, for standing with our children, our educators and our faith community. Your leadership has brought comfort in uncertain times, and your support strengthens our confidence that Mercer Island will remain a place where children can learn to grow in safety and where families can practice their faith.
Well said. Thank you very much. Do you want to leave a copy of your comments for the city clerk?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Anyone else?
There are no further speakers tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, with that, moving on, the consent agenda contains twenty-three items, which are available on the screen and in the agenda packet for review. Counsel, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Becker. City clerk, please call a roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker.
Councilmember Becker.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell.
Oh, sorry, aye.
Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
And Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, all right. Consent agenda passes, which included the proclamation that you guys are here for. We don't read proclamations, so if anybody wants to leave the room, feel free to get up as we move through the meeting. Our first item of regular business is AB sixty-seven forty, which is the emergency management program. We welcome interim police chief Michelle Bennett and emergency manager Amanda Kiefercamp. Welcome.
City Council. All right, we're gonna wait just a second while Ally brings up the PowerPoint presentation.
And, Mr. Mayor, while we're waiting, I'll just mention that interim police chief Michelle Bennett is homesick. So she will not be joining us this evening.
Okay.
All right, there we go. Thank you, Ally. As the mayor said, my name is Amanda Kiefercamp, and I am the emergency manager for the city. Thank you for having me tonight. It is September, which means it is National Preparedness Month, and so I am here to share a few updates about our program in honor of National Preparedness Month. All right, Ally, it looks like the clicker may not be working, so we might have to tag team it. No problem. That's what we get for practicing. All right, there we go. Thank you. So as a little bit of background, the emergency management program was established in the early nineties, and it has been staffed by one, one staff member, the emergency manager, since then. But it is supported by all city departments and a cadre of volunteers. So there, we're essentially, we've got four prongs, four categories that we are responsible for in emergency management. We're responsible for planning for emergencies, responding to emergencies, trainings for emergencies, training, providing trains for staff and volunteers, and then providing public education and outreach. And so, launching right in, we'll start with planning for emergencies. So we have a wide range of emergency plans that we have for the city. We have debris management plans, continuity of operations plans, we have the hazard mitigation plan. And then what you have on the screen and here in person is our comprehensive emergency management plan. And this is the big plan for the city. This kind of is the all-encompassing overarching plan for all of our plans. And so, we are required by state law to update this plan every five years and submit it to the state. And so the state actually has quite a comprehensive list of requirements that we have to include in our plans. They provide a list for everything, including page numbers to making sure that we have included plans for populations within our community that might be limited English speakers. And so, we go through that list, we make sure that we have met, you know, as many of the requirements as we possibly can, and then we submit it to the state, they review it, and then they get back to us. And so they approved our plan earlier this year, and thankfully, you guys just ratified our plan, the consent, so thank you for that. And earlier this year, we, you guys ratified our hazard mitigation plan. We review the hazards every five years for our area and look at strategies for how to mitigate those, those hazards. And so that is essentially what the hazard mitigation plan is. We have annexed on to the King County Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. It's nice that we have joined with other jurisdictions to do that. King County helps provide information and resources and experts for us as we, as we create those plans. It's just one, one less thing for a small jurisdiction like us to have to take on in finding those experts, so we're grateful for that. So it's a little bit about our planning. So we plan to respond to disasters. And so, go ahead and go forward, Ally, sorry. So essentially, when we respond to emergencies, we're talking about a couple of things. So we always talk about the EOC, and so the EOC is the Emergency Operations Center. And the purpose of an EOC is essentially to, to get a situational awareness of the incident and to share that out with the team. And then we gather as a team and we, we send people out and respond to the incident. So what I like to tell people is essentially, you know, somebody from the fire department might not see the incident the same way that somebody from the police department might see it, or Public Works. And so we bring somebody from each of those departments into the room, they share what they're seeing, and then from there, we can create the goals and objectives for that, that incident and send teams out and, and take care of the incident. So that's essentially the purpose of the EOC. And we do that through standardized training, and so FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, they provide training opportunities for us, and it's, it's a standardized process. Our staff, they're all required to take a certain number of classes in order to understand just the basic lingo. There's a lot of jargon in emergency management, so it's helping everybody understand that. And then understanding the way that the city reorganizes during an emergency, which we do, kind of, our organization changes when we respond to big disasters. And so it's, we help the staff stand with that, with standardized training. And then, when we respond, we respond, respond at the lowest level. And so what we mean by that is, is if a Public Works team is out in the field and they can take care of an incident, we want them to take care of an incident. They don't necessarily have to call me. And so, when we're responding at the lowest possible level, that might mean the team in the field. It might mean that team can't take care of it, so then they call in the department and call in extra people. And if that department can't handle it, then they might call me, and then we open the EOC. And if for some reason the city can't handle it, then we're gonna reach out to the county or regional partners. And then from there, we go to the state, and from there to the, the federal government. So we're always managing it at the lowest possible level. And then what we also do is we scale our response. So when we're, when we're talking about emergency management, organize, all right, an emergency management organization is poised to scale to as big as you need the response to be or as small it is. And so, Ally, you wanna go to the next slide? So for example, so you have an incident happen, and so the director might call the city manager or me in to assist with the response. And if I can't help with, with the response myself, I might need additional help. So then, we open it up a little bit bigger. A lot of times, when we're talking about kind of those, those smaller sized incidents, like maybe like a water, a boil water emergency, we might just be calling in the, the communications manager, the PIO, to help as well. If it gets bigger than that, then we might branch out a little bit further. So then we're opening it up to the operations section. And so when we're talking about that red operations section, we're talking about the doers. These are the people, the boots on the ground, they're the ones actually responding to the incident. And if we can get that done, we're, it's, the people that are included in the operations section are the police, fire, public works, and then that's also our mass care branch, and those are the people who operate the community center as a shelter or a warming center or that sort of thing. So those are, those are your doers. Now, if they need more support, then we're calling in more help. So we open it up to the planning section and the logistics section. So the blue planning section there, they are the folks who keep our EOC meetings on a good cadence. They keep those running, they schedule those, they take the meeting minutes, and then they, they take down the goals and objectives that we've identified and keep us on track with that. And then our green section, the logistics section, they are our, our resource people. So they're getting all of the resources that our operations, our boots-on-the-ground people need in order to actually do the response. And that's even down to lodging for those staff and, and feeding them. So that is how we respond to emergencies. And so, talking about some of the emergency that we responded to in the last year, Ally, if you wanna go ahead and jump forward there. So in two thousand and twenty-four, I don't know if you guys are aware, but we were under a local declared emergency for six months of the year, so a hundred and sixty-five days. And that was due in large part to the SPU water main transmission leak and the conservation efforts. So from April to September. And then, later in the year, in November, we have responded to the bomb cyclone. And then we had, we deployed volunteers out to that incident, and we opened the, the community center and the Islander Community, Islander Middle School as community shelters. And then we provided two debris collection sites for three weeks for the community to bring debris that came down on their property that they couldn't take care of. So we are grateful for the volunteers and the staff who responded to that. This year, we assisted with the, as Jesse mentioned, the East Mercer Way water main break and the road damage. Again, this was a minor, a minor response for the EOC, but we were there to assist. And then, Ally, if you wanna jump forward. So we are currently scheduled to open the EOC in response to the Washdott joint replacement project that Jesse mentioned earlier in her city manager report. So as a lot of you will recall, last winter, the joint, well, one of the joints on the East Channel Bridge failed, and it caused the, it, Washdott had to re-stripe and rekind of align I-ninety to around that expansion joint, which is pictured there on the slide. And so, they told us that they would do, would be doing the replacement this year, and they are. And so, they are scheduled to begin sixteen days of work starting September eighteenth to replace, to replace those expansion joints. So I-ninety will be reduced to three lanes during the project, so it'll just be one lane that's closed. So we're grateful that it's one lane and not more. It will keep traffic moving, but we do know that that will impact traffic on I-ninety itself. There won't be any full closures of I-ninety, but there will be rolling slowdowns in the evening. So people who are traveling in overnight hours expect rolling slowdowns as they complete that work. So what that means for Mercer Island, as Jesse mentioned earlier, there will be two, two of our three eastbound on-ramps will be closed during this period. And so the first is the East Mercer Way on-ramp at Southeast Thirty-sixth Street over on the eastern side of the island, and then the H.O.V. on-ramp at Eightieth in Town Center. And so the only way for islanders to go eastbound towards Bellevue or Issaquah, they would have to drive to the on-ramp at Island Crest Way at Southeast Twenty-seventh Street. So what this means is that we are planning for major disruptions and delays across the island. So we have been conducting major communications, a major communications effort is underway to share this out with the community, because we want to share this as far and wide as possible. So essentially, what will happen during this period is Washdott crews will start on the south side of the, of the East Channel Bridge. And for the first eight days, they will work on the south side, which will affect the East Mercer Way on-ramp. When they're finished with that, they will move to the north side of the East Channel Bridge. And with that, that will allow them to open a portion of the East Channel, or the East Mercer Way on-ramp for a, a small lane of cars to get through. So we had worked really hard with Washdott to get that accomplished, so grateful that they were able to do that. That will alleviate some of the pressure of all of the cars moving into Town Center to travel eastbound. So as I mentioned, we've got a major communications effort underway. We started sharing this out a couple of weeks ago when we learned of the confirmed dates with partners. And then, last week, when they signed the contracts, we were, we started sharing this out over social media and through the My Weekly, we've got an alert banner on the city website. This week, we started rolling out electronic reader boards at some of the exits and along city archorials to catch people who may not be on social media or on, on the city website. And we're planning on posting signs around parks to catch parkgoers who may not be from Mercer Island, because we want them to know as well. Our big message is plan ahead. We, we want people to, to, you know, plan their routes and plan around their students and their kids and their after-school activities, medical appointments and things, and keep an emergency kit in your car in case you're stuck in traffic for a couple of hours. Keep food and water. It's all those little things, you know, fill your gas tank and make sure your car is charged. It's just those basic things. So one of the things that we have done as a city to help mitigate the traffic as much as possible is delay or expedite current construction and other projects that are going on in Town Center and throughout the island. So you'll see a pause on a number of those during this time to help keep traffic moving throughout. We, as Jesse mentioned, traffic control will be provided by Washington State Patrol and Mercer Island Police. We're even having the community center staff let rentals know that this, this is coming, so that way they can change their dates or at least be prepared for, for the delays. And then, as I mentioned, the EOC will be activated during this time, especially as the, the weekdays while the East Mercer Way on-ramp is closed. So another thing that we've been planning for is the two thousand and twenty-six FIFA World Cup. So as everybody knows, World Cup is coming to Seattle, June through July next year. Seattle is just one of eleven cities that is hosting games. So we are hosting six games next year, including one of the USA Men's Games, which is really exciting. So we have been meeting since March to plan around this. We know that there are a lot of logistics and security concerns, and so our team has been meeting to, to work through what that looks like for kind of a pass-through community like Mercer Island. And so that's just a list of the upcoming six games next year, so you guys have an idea of what's coming. And then, so teams, a lot of people have these questions. So teams are still actually qualifying for the World Cup. So team location placements will likely be announced in December. So we'll start to get a better idea of what to expect as far as the teams that are coming and the unique spectators that will be coming with them and what that might look like for our region. So this state and federal government are taking the charge on that and sharing that out with partners like us. So again, staff from all departments are, will continue to plan for this. We're attending regional and statewide coordination meetings to, to learn what the state and the county and other communities are doing and how we can, can learn and build on that, so, yeah. And then, the third prong of our emergency management program is our volunteer team. They are the backbone of, of emergency management. And if you corner me, I will talk about my volunteers all day long because they are absolutely incredible. We have a hundred and seventy-five trained volunteers. That means these guys have gone through over twenty hours of training through our Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, program. And then of those sixty of them went a step further and became a badge volunteer. And what that means is essentially they, they go through a background check, and then they take some of those federal online classes like the staff do, so they understand how the city works when we're in that emergency mode. And then, we just, we have a lot of people who participate on a regular basis. We offered eighteen-plus trainings, meetings, events last year, and sixty, sixty of them participated in at least one. It's just, it's an incredible group, and we're just so grateful. We offered four new events last year, including Stop the Bleed, which we are so excited to bring to the community. So we have another class coming up soon. And then, yeah, we, they responded to the November Bomb Cyclone, so we're so proud of them. And then our fourth, our fourth prong of emergency management is our public education and outreach. And so, the other part of our mission, in addition to, you know, obviously planning for and responding to emergencies, is helping islanders prepare. And so, we want to make sure that islanders are prepared to be self-sufficient for seven to fourteen days. And every time they share that with somebody, it's just, they're, they're taken aback because it's a lot, and it is a lot. That's a lot of water, that's a lot of food, that's a lot of planning, but we wanna, we, we're here to help them through that. So that's what we do. So we provide outreach events. We provided twelve outreach events over the last year and a half. Everything from the farmer's market to participating in Town Center trick-or-treat. We like to be out there and be where people are. We offered five preparedness presentations to the community and several training opportunities. And then, last year, we graduated twenty-three community members through our CERT program, so. So really proud of that. We've got a number of, um, uh, upcoming opportunities, including this weekend, we'll be at the farmer's market, we'll be sharing emergency preparedness, um, information and tips, and we will be sharing information about the, um, I-90 closure with the community. And then our next Stop the Bleed is coming up next Thursday. Everybody is invited. We've got a few seats left, so please sign up. Um, and then those are the remaining, remaining events for the year. Um, I will put a plug in for our Map Your Neighborhood program. We offer that year round. Um, it's a really unique thing. Um, one thing that we found out, um, from past, um, global events is that the communities that thrive are the communities that know each other. And so our Map Your Neighborhood gives you the opportunity to do that. In our digital age, a lot of people don't get to know each other. And so this, you host an event, we come out, we provide a presentation, and we give you guys an opportunity to, to learn about each other and find out what skills people have and, and, and share. So it's just a really unique thing and we, all you have to do is host and we'll come out. So anyways, that is a little bit about our upcoming outreach opportunities. That is the quick and dirty about the emergency management program. Thanks for sticking with it. I would be happy to answer any questions.
I'll be surprised if you get any, any questions after that thorough, uh, announcement. I, I do wish that you could send me the, the FIFA schedule again.
Yeah.
I tried to snap a picture of it, but I missed it. So that's exciting stuff. Counsel, any questions? Okay, I was right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Our second item of regular business is AB 6757, the Marine Patrol Vessel Replacement Contract. And we welcome, uh, it looks like Commander, Commander Jeff Magnin and Commander Seifer.
Good evening, Counsel. Deputy Mayor and Mayor, I'm Jeff Magnin. I'm your services commander, and this is AB 6757. And Allie has generously said that she would run my slides for me, so thank you for that. And if she gets her slides up, we'll continue. The action item tonight is to approve an additional $60,000 in appropriation from the Equipment Rental Reserve Fund and authorize the city manager to execute a purchase agreement with Invotec Marine Solutions, doing businesses as life-proof boats to construct and deliver a new marine patrol vessel. So on background, the city of Mercer Island began marine patrol services in Lake Washington in 1982. Soon after, other cities of, the cities of Renton and Medina signed interlocal agreements to have Mercer Island provide coverage in their jurisdiction. Today, the Marine Patrol continues the tradition by providing maritime law enforcement, search and rescue, and general safety and security on Lake Washington. We currently cover about 34 miles of shoreline, spend approximately 900 hours patrolling the waters, and the current ILA includes Bellevue, Medina, Renton, the towns of Hunts Point and Yarrow Point. Next slide, please. So our current fleet encompasses three patrol vessels. Patrol 11, which was put into service in 1997. It's a 30-foot Almar built in Tacoma, Washington. Patrol 12 is a 24-foot safe boat built in Bremerton in 1998. And Patrol 14 was built in 2008 and is a 32-foot safe boat also built in Bremerton. Next slide, please. As stated, Patrol 11 was put into service in 1997 and has been the backbone workhorse of our marine fleet. At the time of manufacture, it was given a 20-year lifespan, which would have put it at replacement in 2017. As is good practice, in 2007, we conducted a full hull survey, which returned favorably. We extended the service life and conducted an overhaul of the major systems. In early 2024, we conducted a similar survey and unfortunately received less than favorable results. The survey observed cracked in some wells and some fatigue in some of the hull plates. With the age of the vessel, vessel and the rigorous responsibility and the need for emergency response, it was determined that Patrol 11 should be replaced, and we began the process of creating requests for proposals for its replacement. Next slide, please. The RFP went out to many marine builders in Washington State with design requirements focused on our mission of service in Lake Washington and the needs of our city and partner jurisdictions, where we received positive responses and ultimately chose life-proof boats as the approved vendor for replacing Patrol 11. Next slide, please. Life-proof boats designed fit our needs and was the most cost-effective of all of the responses. They're built in Port Orchard, Washington, and have a track record of building quality vessels, uh, that are marine, uh, patrol mission or military mission specific. The Fono is a very similar vessel that was built and purchased by the Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife. Next slide, please. The city's Equipment Rental Fund accounts for maintaining, operating, and replacing all city-owned vehicles, heavy equipment, and radios. Vehicle replacements are funded through internal user charges expressly set aside to replace vehicles and equipment like our marine patrol vessels. Resources to acquire a new marine patrol vessel are included in the Equipment Rental Fund. In 2025, 2026 by annual budget, it included $600,000 for the acquisition of a new marine patrol vessel. An additional $60,000 is required. Based on the $660,000 purchase price, the additional 60, uh, $60,000 appropriation would come from the vehicle replacement reserve in the Equipment Rental Fund, which amounted to 1.25 million at the end of 2024. Uh, the total vessel includes a fully outfitted and equipped commercial-grade patrol vessel, sea trial fees, staff inspections, a transport trailer, and sales tax. Staff are scheduled to inspect the vessel's construction at key points, including architectural approval, pre-welding, hull enclosure, the start of reading, and finally sea trials and acceptance. As Patrol 11 remain in service, the current one, remain in service during the construction phase, a minimal amount of equipment will be transferred to the new vessel upon delivery. Once we receive the new vessel, Patrol 11 will be decommissioned and sold. Last slide, please. And that's Patrol 11 going off into the sunset sometime in 2026 if this AB is approved. And do you have any questions?
Well, I'm, I'm a little surprised that you chose that picture as your closing slide as opposed to the picture of it laying on the bottom of the, of the lake when it sank the first time. I, uh, I, I just want to say I appreciate you bringing this forward. We, uh, I've spent every year that I was mayor down in Olympia with your assistance lobbying for funding from the state to try and get some sort of grant funding or matching funding to help assist with the Marine Patrol Vessel Replacement. You know, the Marine Patrol in Lake Washington, which is a federally navigable waterway, uh, it provides a huge regional impact. And we're doing marine patrol services for the cities of Renton and Bellevue all the way up to Yarrow Point. And so, you know, your comment earlier about the number of miles of shoreline that we're patrolling is, is really just the whole south end of the lake, all the way up maybe a little bit north of 520. So it's a, a pretty extensive service basin and having the right equipment, something, you know, and that Almar that we're replacing Patrol 11, uh, was in service when I was in college. And so it's, it's had a full and, uh, a long life, but it is time to retire it. So I appreciate all the effort that went into doing this and the fact that we're paying for it locally at Mercer Island is, you know, a contribution to the region's safety. Uh, but also it's not for lack of trying. We, we spent four years down there in Olympia asking for money and we just weren't successful. All right, Councilmember Reynolds.
Yeah, just a quick question. Um, this, this particular slide went by fast, so I may have missed it, but I think you said that there was a scoring mechanism that gave favoritism to the state of Washington manufacturers. But I also think you said that the low, the contract's going to the low bidder, uh, which is good, and they are a state of Washington manufacturer, but was there anybody that was eliminated from consideration because there were not?
We actually only sent, oops, I apologize, my speaker stopped for a second. Uh, we actually only sought requests for proposals from Washington State builders. We have a number of builders in the state of Washington, and we felt it was best to keep the funds within the state. Not that there wasn't, uh, adequate vendors outside of the state, but you think of the cost to travel, the cost of, uh, if there were a problem later after construction and after we've received it, we felt it was best, uh, the money spent in Washington.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Yeah, so, uh, first of all, I, I fully support, uh, the motion that, or the, uh, the proposal here. Uh, and I wanted to share with, uh, the council and the public that one of the questions that I asked of, uh, staff, um, in the, the past week about this, uh, agenda bill was whether this is all coming out of Mercer Islanders' pockets or whether there's, uh, we're going to be sharing the cost with our, uh, partner communities. My understanding from the answer that I received was that it is going to be a cost recovery model that, uh, will leverage, uh, the partnerships that we have with other cities, that Mercer Island is paying for some of it certainly, um, but all the cities that are benefiting from the, uh, from the service, uh, the marine service will, uh, be, uh, putting their, uh, fair share of it with specific numbers to be determined, um, but that, uh, it's, uh, a joint effort, a regional effort.
Thank you. Councilmember Reynolds.
Just a little education for me. Um, I think you said it's a 34-foot boat, which is kind of big. Um, you're obviously not carrying enough people on the boat to warrant something that large. What, what does the boat do that requires such a large boat?
The, the vessel that we've described and designed is 33 feet, so it's only slightly bigger than the current vessel we have. And we cover a variety of different things within our mission. So not only do we conduct patrolling, which you're right, would encompass, you know, two to three people onboard the boat as we patrol around the lake, but we also conduct search and rescue operations, which does require more staff. We also do dive rescue and dive recovery off of that vessel, along with installing and maintaining our series of buoys around Lake Washington. So we needed something that not only was ruggedized, uh, built for our missions that we've described, but something that will last. Because the last thing we wanted to do was spend the, the city's money on something that wasn't going to last as long as the one that we replaced. You know, we pride ourselves in the fact that we've been able to receive a, a vessel, the old Patrol 11, that went eight years past its supposed life, and we didn't jump right away to say, let's replace it. We wanted to continue it. So it's a similar vessel to what we currently have within our fleet. It's slightly bigger than Patrol 14, but it will be the standard workhorse, the backbone of our, of our fleet.
Thank you.
Councilmember Weicher.
Thank you, Commander Magnin. I want you to brag a little bit. It's not just a boat, it's a lifesaving machine. So can you talk a little bit about the work you guys do during seafar craziness as well as middle of winter storms? Like, this is benefiting Mercer Islanders and anyone on the water, whether in a boat or on the shore, or trying to kayak or whatever. So just talk a little bit about the human element and the lives that you save day in and day out with no time to spare in a three-minute phone call.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. Thank you for, for bringing that up. It is definitely something that we are out there on days that are beautiful and nice like seafar, where there's a lot of vessels out there and a lot of interaction with the public. But we also have to be out there on those nasty days of high winds and things like that. I hearken back to, um, you know, the early days of the Marine Patrol when the I-90 Bridge sank. Our boat was actually out there conducting operations. Part of the bridge broke free, the new bridge broke free and started drifting towards the 520 Bridge. If our vessel wasn't out there to assist in that in nasty weather, it would have probably taken out the 520 Bridge. Now, that's old news, but we do that on a daily basis. We're out there on rainy days, we're out there on sunny days. We try to interact with the public to keep them safe, and that's primarily what we do is education. The other things that we do are going into schools, both in our jurisdiction and our partner agencies, and conduct boating safety classes, swimming safety classes, things like that to, to those groups. Uh, and we've received extremely positive response. I pride myself in, in, uh, in the unit that we have. We have a Washington State, uh, boating safety instructor in-house that, um, not only helps teach our staff, but also teaches at the state level, teaches other marine patrol agencies and how they function. And he happens to be in the room in there. Um, he is, uh, he is a benefit. Um, we work very, very well with our partner agencies and, and I think that you, you have a jewel in this. Um, I miss the days of, of going out on the water, but I'm, I'm lucky enough to, to have, uh, great staff, uh, that are, are currently operating the, the vessels out there and, uh, hopefully protecting, uh, as many of our citizens as we can.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Yeah, I, I think this is great. Um, Jeff, you mentioned that there was a, a few points in the process where, where someone from our staff would go look at the boat, um, in terms of the development. Do, who is that on the team? Do we have a, is it a mechanic? What is the engineer? What's the, can you just fill me in on that?
No, it's, yeah, I'm happy to, to expound upon that a little bit. So we have a team of the current Marine Patrol Sergeant, um, who will go out there. He's kind of the one that has to run this new vessel, so we want his input. We also have myself that will be going, and Sergeant Shoemaker, which was the previous, uh, Marine Patrol Sergeant, he's the one that really helped get this project going and work us through this. As far as engineering, we rely on the manufacturers themselves, they are the expert in this. But it's mostly how does the boat going to operate? How are we going to operate the boat? Where do we want things laid? And the inspections to include laying of the hull is a key point for us to be able to go see how it's laid out, see the, the strength in it, and ensure that the quality that we want and the quality that we have are being adhered to.
Got it. Thank you. Councilmember Weinberg.
Yeah, I was wondering, uh, also, uh, Commander, if you could, uh, expound upon the firefighting capabilities of the boat. I saw in the specs for it that it has, uh, significant equipment, not just for putting out, I, I believe it's not just for putting out the fire on the boat itself, but for putting out fires on, on other boats. What, what is the equipment that it has and capabilities that it has in that regard?
Sure, the, the vessel will come with a, we, we like to call it a dewatering pump. Luckily, the, the vessel has the ability to have unlimited water, unlike maybe some shore-based firefighters that have to hook up to a hydrant. We just suck what we need right out of the lake. And we're able to not only suck that water out of a boat to de-water it and salvage it, but we can also utilize that to spray water. The pump that we're looking at is 500 gallons per minute. Um, and, you know, that's what we would use for, you know, anything that could be a marine based incident or to assist our local fire department and in any jurisdiction to supply water. Uh, this also come, came into play when recently our fire department did some testing on the new light rail system and how they were going to get water to the middle of the bridge. We found that our pump would be adequate enough to supply them some water to be able to, uh, fight fire on the bridge deck itself. So it's kind of a multifaceted, uh, vessel, meeting the mission requirements that we asked for.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, was that new hand? Nope. Okay. Counsel, is there a motion to appropriate an additional $60,000 from the Equipment Rental Fund Reserve and authorize the city manager to execute a purchase agreement with, uh, Invotec Marine Solutions LLC DVA Life-Proof Boats, substantially in the form as shown in Exhibit 2, and other related documents and agreements required for the transaction to construct and deliver a new Marine Patrol vessel for the city of Mercer Island?
So moved.
Second. Okay, moved by Councilmember Weinberg, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum. Any discussion? Not seeing any, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Androw.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Mayor Nice.
Aye.
Councilmember Becker.
Aye.
And Councilmember Weicher.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, motion is approved. Counsel, um, our final item of regular business is AB 6763 Code Amendments Regarding E-Motorcycle Regulations Ordinance Number 25C-24. First reading, we welcome City Manager Jesse Bond and Police Commander Mike Seifer and Management Analyst Amelia Jaden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Amelia is going to walk through, uh, the slide deck introducing, uh, this first reading of the ordinance. I wanted to mention, uh, today, as we were going through the Q and A matrix, uh, we realized that it might be helpful if we better distinguished between e-motocycles and e-dirt bikes. And so we added to our PowerPoint that terminology. It's gonna, it's gonna be new to you because it wasn't in the agenda bill, but we're trying to distinguish, uh, the 31 flavors of e-motocycles, and we have the same issue with e-bikes. So I'll let Amelia dive in. I'm sure we'll have a robust discussion. I am looking for feedback this evening. Uh, one thing I will ask in the motion, uh, we set the date for the second reading as two weeks from now. If we have a lot of changes, we're probably going to need another meeting to get that second reading ready to go. So when we get to the motion, let's just check in and I'll, I'll let you know what I think we'll be able to do with that. All right, Amelia, uh, thanks for your good work on this, and, uh, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Allie. We're going to try using the clicker again. So, um, good evening, Counsel. My name is Amelia Jaden, Management Analyst, and I will be guiding. Counsel. My name is Amelia Jayden, Management Analyst, and I will be guiding you through tonight's presentation on AB 6763 about e-motorcycle regulations. I will first walk through the differences between e-bikes, traditional electric motorcycles, and then e-motocycles. I'll cover some background information and information around enforcement practices before moving on to the proposed ordinance and next steps. Counsel, I want to take a moment to differentiate between e-bikes, e-motocycles, and then a traditional electric motorcycle, and provide some visuals, because the language that we use around these vehicles is important. These vehicles are different, and thus have the different regulations. So to start us off, we have e-bikes. There are three classes of e-bikes differentiated between the type of assistance they provide and their maximum assisted speed. On Class 1 and Class 2 e-bikes, you can reach a speed of 20 miles per hour with assistance, and that's using either a pedal assist or a throttle. On a Class 3 e-bike, the rider would be able to reach an assisted speed of 28 miles per hour using either both the pedal assist and throttle, or just one or the other. It is possible to go faster than either 20 or 28 miles per hour on these vehicles, but at those speeds, the motor stops providing assistance, so they become human-powered, or if you're, let's say you're going down a hill, they'd be a gravity-powered vehicle. The other important distinguishing feature for e-bikes is that the power output on their motor is, will always be under 750 watts. Next, we have traditional electric motorcycles. So under state law, a motorcycle means a vehicle that would travel on two to three wheels, where the driver has a seat and steers on a handle, or steers with a handlebar. This definition of a motorcycle was likely written to address traditional motorcycles sold under the brands of Harley-Davidson or Kawasaki. Much like electric cars, motorcycle manufacturers have evolved their product line to include gas-powered, or alternatives to gas-powered vehicles, producing versions of traditional motorcycles that could use an EV charger. These newer electric motorcycles, much like traditional motorcycles, would be purchased at a dealership and would go through licensing and registration requirements with the Department of Licensing. The vehicles that you see on screen have a motor with a power output of around 75,000 watts and have top speeds of over 100 miles per hour. Shifting gears, we are now looking at examples of e-motocycles or e-dirt bikes. Today, I might switch between using these words, e-motocycles and e-dirt bikes, but they are meaning the same thing. A few of the distinguishing factors for these vehicles is that they have a dirt bike-style frame, which is larger and heavier than your typical e-bike. These vehicles may not have fully operable pedals and instead have brackets or foot pegs where the rider would rest their feet. The power output on these vehicles will exceed 750 watts, and the motor will continue to provide power after the vehicle has reached 28 miles per hour. The photos that you see on the screen are e-motocycles. On the left, you have the Tolarius Sting, which has a maximum speed of 47 miles per hour, with a motor with a power output of 6,000 watts. And on the right, you have an EK X21 bike with a maximum speed of 45 miles per hour with a power output of 3,000 watts. E-motocycles are widely available for purchase online, and many retailers market these vehicles as e-bikes, leading to confusion from consumers, and resulting in people buying vehicles that are not legal to be operated on a public rotor street without registration. Tonight, Counsel, the ordinance presented to you pertains solely to the operation and regulation of e-motocycles. This work is complicated, and there are a lot of small, intricate details. Staff are working on local regulations for e-bikes and anticipate that they will be in front of you with this, these regulations in the coming months, but I will talk about this later in our next step section. Tonight, we will narrow our focus to focus solely on e-motocycles. As this is the first reading, we will take any feedback and questions you may have and adjust the ordinance as needed for second reading. The city has seen an increase in usage of e-motocycles and e-dirt bikes, an increase in the usage of these vehicles particularly among unlicensed youth and individuals under the age of 16. Riders often demonstrate unsafe riding behaviors, like traveling at high speeds, not wearing a helmet, riding on sidewalks, demonstrating tricks. That creates a danger for both themselves and for the community. Ordinance Number 25C-24 would establish that the operation of e-motocycles by unlicensed youth is unlawful in the public right-of-way. The ordinance would also prohibit any rider from operating an e-motorcycle on a pedestrian path or within a public park. Currently, NYPD will attempt to contact youths that they see riding e-motocycles, and when contact is made, parents are called to retrieve the vehicle and pick up their child. A similar process is used when an e-motorcycle is parked at Islander Middle School or at Mercer Island High School. The student resource, or school resource officer identifies the student and alerts their parents. When contact is made with parents, they are reminded of the dangers of these vehicles and that the regulations around their use. Currently, there are two issues that limit the ability of the Mercer Island Police Department to take additional enforcement actions. First, there is a gap between the ages of the youth riding these vehicles and the ability for our court system to process the violation. The Mercer Island Municipal Court can only process cases for juveniles when the defendant is 16 years old, 16 years older, older, and the offense is a traffic violation. Many of the riders operating e-motocycles on the island are 15 years or younger, meaning their case could not be prosecuted by the municipal court. Thus, the case would need to be escalated to the King County Prosecutor to enforce violations on e-motocycles for youth 15 and younger. Should a case make it to the King County Prosecutor, it is unlikely the prosecutor will take enforcement action due to the capacity restraints of the King County Court system. The second issue restricting the police department's ability to take enforcement actions falls within the state definition of a motorcycle. We've touched on this, but as a reminder, motorcycle means a vehicle that would travel on two wheels, where the driver has a seat and steers with a handlebar. To note, both e-scooters and e-bikes, as well as mopeds, are excluded from this definition. While someone could interpret this RCW to include e-motocycles and e-dirt bikes, the path towards enforcement is not straightforward. When the RCWs were written or last revised, e-motocycles were either not in existence or not included in the discussions. E-motocycles are showing up more commonly on our roads and right-of-ways. They are not legal to be ridden on the road unless the owner has taken the necessary steps for the e-motorcycle to be registered and licensed. As mentioned, the e-motocycles seen on Mercer Island have a dirt bike-style frame. They have a higher output than your typical e-bike, but a lower output than your traditional e-motorcycle. They cost significantly less than your traditional e-motor, or electric motorcycle, and they are available for purchase online, meaning you would not need to go to a dealership or a specialty store to purchase as you would with a Harley-Davidson or Kawasaki. And as such, e-motocycles are in a gray area between e-bikes and traditional electric motorcycles that not only creates confusion on the consumer's end, but limits NYPD from taking additional enforcement action. Mercer Island is not alone in navigating this issue. Many jurisdictions in the region are reporting similar issues with e-motocycles. Moving forward, the best solution would be for the Washington State Legislature to adopt modern definitions that reflect the differences in these vehicles. Staff are working with the Association of Washington Cities and other regional partners to advocate for legislative changes to address these issues. Staff will present these recommendations in the draft legislative priorities for city council consideration in November. I think I pressed the wrong button. There we go. Thank you. Over the last year, staff have conducted a robust public outreach and education campaign that included a broad e-bike safety webpage, multiple social media posts and features in the MI Weekly, an email that was distributed by the Mercer Island School District to all IMS parents, the police department co-hosted two assemblies at Islander Middle School, and staff tabled up both Summer Celebration and National Night Out. The goal of this communications campaign was to promote safe ridership, inform the community of the differences between these vehicles, and third, share how to report an incident of unsafe or illegal behavior. The Mercer Island community has been very active on this issue. Between the start of this year and August 25th, the police department received roughly 70 calls expressing concerns about e-bikes, e-motocycles, and e-dirt bikes. Additionally, between January and August of this year, the city council and the customer service team, as well as other city inboxes, have received nearly 20 emails. This number has increased from the number that you saw in your agenda bill over the last week, likely in response to these regulations coming As a reminder, Counsel, community members are asked to call 911 when witnessing unsafe and illegal behaviors involving e-bikes and e-motocycles. Calling 911 is the fastest way to deploy an officer to an incident and to stop these behaviors as they are happening. Ordinance Number 25C-24 would add a section to Title 10 MIC that would adopt a definition of an e-motorcycle. The ordinance would also prohibit the operation of an e-motorcycle for anyone under the age of 16, and anyone without a valid driver's license with a motorcycle endorsement. The ordinance would prohibit the operation of an e-motorcycle that is not registered with the state of Washington and does not display a valid license plate. The ordinance would prohibit the operation of e-motocycles on any sidewalk, pedestrian path, and within public parks. And finally, the ordinance would establish the ability for NYPD to impound an e-motorcycle. Violations of these regulations are civil infractions, which would be subject to a $250 penalty on your first offense, $500 on your second offense, and $750 on your third offense. The ordinance proposes the following definition for e-motocycles. An electric motorcycle means a motorcycle, as defined by state law, which is powered solely by electricity and is not equipped with fully operable pedals capable of propelling it. Foot pegs are not considered pedals. An electric motorcycle has a power output that exceeds 750 watts, or is capable of traveling over 28 miles per hour with motor assistance. This definition was created in collaboration with other cities navigating this issue. The proposed ordinance would not fully solve the two issues limiting enforcement as discussed earlier. However, the new regulations would provide law enforcement with a tool that would reduce the number of e-bikes, or not e-bikes, e-motocycles, my apologies, seen on Mercer Island, diminish the threat to public safety, and assign a monetary penalty for violations. Impounding a vehicle and requiring the parent or owner to retrieve it, plus the civil infractions, are a power education, powerful educational mechanism. The message is clear. There are real dangers associated with these vehicles and consequences for allowing underage youth to operate them unlawfully. If adopted, the ordinance would go into effect on January 1st of next year. Between now and the beginning of next year, staff will establish the process for impoundment, which may include updating Chapter 10.22 MIC, which is the chapter on impoundment, and the city's fee schedule. Staff will also determine where, determine where e-motocycles will be stored once impounded, and set the process for how to retrieve an, an impounded e-motorcycle. As this issue is relatively new, staff will update the regulations as the situation progresses to meet emerging needs. Staff will also report back on the effectiveness of the proposed regulations. As mentioned earlier, work is underway on establishing regulations for e-bikes. This will require a separate ordinance that staff plan to present in the coming months. Regulations for e-bikes will require collaboration with the Parks and Recreation Commission, as well as the Open Space Conservancy Trust. With that, the possibility of a parental responsibility clause, where the burden of a violation would shift from the minor to the parent or owner of the vehicle, is being explored. If deemed possible, staff will return with this clause for city council Staff will continue work on the outreach campaign started last year. Once the ordinance is adopted, or after the ordinance is adopted, messaging will shift to promote the new regulations, and the campaign will broadcast these regulations across the existing platforms. I am now going to turn it over to Robbie Cunningham Adams to discuss strategy with the state legislature.
Thanks, Amelia. Good evening, Counsel. Again, like I said, I'm Robbie, the senior analyst with the city manager's office. I also help coordinate our state legislative engagement strategy. So I wanted to jump in and give a little background and kind of how I and the team is thinking about engaging with Olympia on this issue. Last year, in, ahead of the 2025 legislative session, we did engage with legislators requesting assistance specifically on e-bikes and requiring manufacturers to label e-bikes based on their classification, and to restrict the sale of e-motocycles or e-dirt bikes. Fortunately, our request did not gain traction with the legislature, and we seem to be one of the only voices on the topic. However, over the last year, as many neighboring cities are seeing an increase in dangerous activity and use of e-motocycles and, and e-bikes, many other cities are speaking up on this issue as their problems have worsened. Next slide, please. During an AWC 2026 legislative session planning call that occurred last month, thanks to Amelia, Mercer Island staff initiated a conversation on e-motocycles and e-dirt bikes, and many, many cities spoke up in that call in support of getting some help from Olympia on this issue. And so because of that, that issue was not originally kind of on the AWC's radar, and it is being elevated as a possible legislative priority by the Association of Washington Cities. We have had a follow-up call with the, of the AWC policy team to share our research and our kind of experience with this problem, and to coordinate possible legislative tools. This engagement is ongoing. I think we have a call scheduled in a couple of weeks, actually. Next slide, please. Counselors, you may know, getting a bill through the legislature often takes many years, and requires several smaller bills that build on each other. I think one thing we have learned from the engagement last year is that we want to kind of start small, and something that is broadly agreeable and build from there. And we have kind of determined that updating or modernizing the definition of e-motocycles and e-dirt bikes is probably the best place to start. We're just not really, it's what we've heard of neighboring cities and legislators in AWC, there's not like a obvious opposition to it. And this will be staff's recommendation as a key goal for the 2026 legislative section. Next slide, please. That being said, you know, the city staff, we are interested with additional state tools and assistance with both e-motocycles and e-bikes, and we're going to work with AWC and legislators in the coming weeks and months to see, you know, what, what is kind of the potential for additional state action. Just a few things on the top of our mind is additional state support on differentiating better between traditional electric motorcycles, think that Harley-Davidson versus an e-dirt bike or e-motorcycle. We're also interested, you know, on additional safety policies on e-bikes, you know, that kind of labeling and education on classification at point of sale. It's really clear that the consumer does not always know what they're buying. And in many cases, we feel like this is something the state needs to do some enforcement on the sellers and the retail side, too, of making sure what really ought to be in that traditional motorcycle process, we're adding some of these categories of bikes to. One thing I will say is our read on the situation Olympia is that, especially around e-bikes, that additional state regulation is going to be a lot more controversial than state regulations on e-motocycles. And it's probably going to require multiple legislative sessions to build consensus on. I think there is a, you know, very legitimate and a value that we share that e-bikes are a sustainable transportation alternative, they're green, they're kind of alternative to cars or, you know, public transit that many people, you know, want to use. And so we're going to have to kind of work with our regional partners and legislators, find the balance of the public safety concerns we're experiencing on the island versus kind of those goals and values that comes to e-bikes. I am feeling confident, though, that the issue around e, these kind of e-dirt bikes and the like is going to be an easier place to start, and is a pathway through the state legislature on. So we'll keep you updated. There'll certainly be a theme that we focus on in our legislative priorities document that we'll be considering later this year, and certainly starting in January with the new legislative session. Next slide, please. I think it's our last slide. I think we're all here for questions, so yeah, so I have PD and Amelia as well. So that's the end of our presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Reynolds.
I have a series of questions. I'll take them one at a time. Most of these are follow-up questions to questions I submitted in advance. And the first one I was due was Section 10.53.010. You have two provisions in there, one that says no person- One that says no person under the age of 16 can operate one, and another one that says no person without a driver's license and a motorcycle endorsement can operate one. Since you can't get an endorsement or a driver's license until you're 16, why do we need the first provision? It feels unnecessarily redundant.
Noting your comment, and I will need to look into that. I'm not prepared to respond tonight, but we'll add it to the list of things to review for the second reading.
Okay. Thank you. And Mayor, when it's convenient, I'll raise my hand again.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
I have a question on this. I just want to thank the team for working on this. This has been something that the team has been working on for a very long time. I won't try to guess how long it's been because I have no sense of time, but it has been a long time. You know, a lot of this has come in a lot of, in the form of a lot of questions and comments and concerns from parents themselves. You know, and I think this is an issue where we can, you know, I'm looking forward to see what the team brings back, you know, down the line here about e-bikes. I think this is, this makes sense to me in terms of, you know, what we should do for e-dirt bikes. I was just looking at Amazon, and there were plenty of them. And they all sort of had this weird caveat about checking with your local laws. You know, part of my concern here is when I raised this with a bunch of other city council members from other cities, I asked if this was an issue, and a lot of people raised their hand. And then everyone went in to start talking about what they were going to do in their city, which illustrates the problem exactly, that if, you know, if you go over the bridge in either direction, you're going to have a different set of rules and regulations. I mean, that's impossible for businesses to handle in terms of trying to deal with 20 different, you know, patchwork of regulations when they're trying to sell and also for people trying to buy the right thing for their kids. The other piece here is that I don't want this to seem like we're, you know, trying to, you know, reduce anyone's mobility options or take away their fun. And I think that these things, you know, e-bikes, you know, are great outlets for children and, you know, young adults in our community to be able to have some independence, get around. But I think, you know, as a city, we have a responsibility to encourage this to be done as safely as possible. At the same time, there's a huge element of responsibility for parents here. If you're buying your kid an electric motorcycle, you know, you really need to think carefully about making sure that they have the right training, the right endorsements, and, you know, understand what they're doing. Even for an e-bike, you know, it's important to have conversations, understand what your expectations are of their behavior. This is not something where government is going to, you know, ensure everyone knows what they're doing 100% of the time. It's just going to be impossible for us. We all have to share the roads, and I think this is a good step to do that. Looking forward to see, you know, what comes back down the road. I do really think that the state needs to step up on this. You know, it'd be real a shame to have to name a loft or someone who loses their life in an accident because we weren't, you know, now we're not going to be ahead of the ball as a state, but it's, you know, if we can try to catch up and understand how we can encourage use of these mobility devices without, you know, causing undue safety concerns.
Councilmember Becker.
Yeah. I have a question about the definition that we have of the e-motorcycle. So there's two points. So powered by electricity, doesn't have operable pedals, and can go faster than 28 miles per hour. Specifically, I'm wondering about things that go faster than 28 miles per hour but do have operable pedals that I'm reading are essentially not Class III e-bikes because they can go faster than 28 miles per hour. And I was just Googling if this exists, and I can see one that has operable pedals but goes 50 miles per hour. I'm just wondering what, like, is that, does that, I mean, it doesn't seem like that falls into this definition. Doesn't seem like it's an e-bike. I mean, part of it, I mean, I hear people that say things that look like e-bikes but go 40 miles per hour. And so I'm just unclear where those, which those could be modified e-bikes. And so if that falls into the next discussion, that's fine. But it's not clear to me whether those vehicles even are e-bikes.
I think there is a question there that we will get back to for second reading. But I think the important distinguishing factor for staff is that anything that's going faster than 28 miles per hour and providing assistance at, let's say, 29 miles per hour would be constituted as an e-motorcycle.
With or without pedals, so every, it's going to slide into that definition. We did, we have some follow-up work to do on the definition. Mayor Neese reached out and pointed out something that we need to work on. We didn't have time to get it updated for tonight's meeting. But for the second reading, we're going to take a look at all your comments and see if we can tighten it up. You can see the problem we're having here is that, you know, our regulations rely on the underlying state laws. And when the state laws don't have current definitions that reflect the modern vehicles on the road, we're having to plug in a definition. We have been working with other cities and drafting this ordinance. This is similar to, I think, Izaco's ordinance, which is in progress right now, too. This is one piece of the puzzle here on Mercer Island, but we, as Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum said, we really need some help from the state in modernizing the RCWs.
Okay. Thank you.
And Councilmember Becker, I'm glad you mentioned modified because I had sent a picture from Amsterdam to Chief Bennett of the police and what they have to go through to look for modified e-bikes or e-motocycles. You know, people are taking a 28 mile an hour device and taking a restrictor off of it. And so police are now having to put these kind of treadmills together where they're running the bikes on a, like a dyno-type device to see what is the actual theoretical maximum speed to tell what's been modified. So I'm certain at some point in the future, they're going to have a whole range of testing equipment that is out there looking for these things. Councilmember Reynolds.
Yeah, maybe we can put some of that testing equipment on this new boat we got. But anyway, second one I have is just kind of a nit. Has to do with that same Section 10.53.010.2. Says no person may operate an electric motorcycle that is not registered with the Washington State Department of Licensing and does not have a valid license plate. I asked about this in advance because I feel like it should be "or", and staff said no. But as I read the grammar of this, what that means is if you have one that is registered with the state but does not have a license plate, then it's allowed. And I don't think we want that. Is that really the intent? I think we want to have both those things. So if it fails to have either, then it should not be allowed.
We'd be happy to review it again. I'm not in a position to wordsmith tonight. I don't have the whole team here that worked on this ordinance. So we're just recording your comments, and we'll be happy to follow up.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Weiger.
I'll just say, having e-bike 20 miles an hour is fast enough. Thank you for bringing this public safety issue forward and working on it. Well done.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Yeah, so first of all, I am supportive of the, this e-motorcycle/e-dirt bike ordinance. As it's currently written, we can make adjustments as time goes on, like the ones that Craig was mentioning, or Councilmember Reynolds was mentioning. Second, the ordinance that most islanders want to see and to have a say in shaping is the ordinance that is coming months in the future, which is the ordinance on e-bikes. And I've heard from several residents outside of this meeting, as well as inside this meeting, about teens riding bikes recklessly and most often around Mercer Dale Park. And these same residents also frequently report that in response to their asking or telling the teens that they need to slow down and ride more responsibly, that the teens have openly mocked or even spoken aggressive and intimidating tones. So there's an example. Earlier this summer, I was shopping for some paper products in the local Rite Aid, and I was shocked to see a group of four teenagers riding their e-bikes indoors up and down the aisles at Rite Aid. And the store manager told them they need to leave their bikes outside, but they refused, claiming that their bikes would be stolen if they left them outside. And when I confronted them about this, about riding their bikes in the store and following the store owner's instructions, they gave me the same excuse, claiming that their bikes had no mechanism for carrying a lock. I examined one of their bikes, and what they were saying was accurate, but it's irrelevant. The, I advised them that they need to carry a lock, and they need to follow the laws and not have a bike in the store. And the, as they, one of them did openly mock me as I walked away. All the boys left before the police could arrive. While openly disrespectful behavior from anybody is frustrating to experience, I think we need to be careful here. As the governing body of a city, we need to not allow anger and other emotions to lead us to react in an impulsive fashion. We need to respond in a measured and proportionate and yet firm manner to these. Ultimately, we want to see these teenage boys. And all the misbehavior that I've seen and heard people report so far have been e-bike riders who were boys, by the way. I want to see these boys learn from their mistakes and survive to adulthood where they can make better decisions, hopefully. And at the same time, we also need to make sure that they are not endangering the safety and lives of others around them. So I'm not suggesting that we pass a law requiring that all teenagers be polite. People do have the right of free speech in this country as long as they're not inciting violence or expressing hate. But teens and young adults will learn through social and economic consequences what disrespect and impoliteness does from their peers and from their teachers and their coaches and their parents, and eventually their employers. But as we do with automobiles, we should form a broad and multifaceted collaboration with schools and parents and e-bike manufacturers and retailers, other governmental agencies, and including the state representatives through the AWC, and also with youth leaders to get the e-bike user behavior expectations known and also what the consequences are of the misbehavior. There is a list of ideas that I have not for this one that we're talking about tonight because I, again, agree with the way that we've structured our e-motorcycle ordinance this evening. But I think for the e-bike ordinance that we start to draft, and thank you for sharing that you're going to be reviewing it in open public meetings with the Parks Board and with the Open Space Conservancy Trust so that members of the public can give their input. It's not just, you know, one and done, where they get one chance to talk to council about it. It's going to be built over time, which is good. But we need to make sure that law enforcement can impound e-bikes that are brought into a building against the proprietor's rules. We need to make sure that, or we need to encourage the state to pass laws requiring that e-bikes have the ability to carry a lock. We should explore, I'll send you a list of these as well. We should explore expanding vehicle registration and licensing requirements to include e-bikes. We should explore the creation of a new interlocal agreement between the city and the school district, establishing a protocol for school district officials to assist police in identifying a youth photographed riding an e-bike recklessly in a public space. It's my understanding we don't have the funding or the resources to do that right now. I get it. But I think that it's important to make that connection. I don't think that we should ban all e-bikes in all parks on the island. That would clearly be overkill. For one thing, all the I-90 pedestrian and bicycle lane traffic touches down in the middle of Aubrey Davis Park. And there are a lot of people that use e-bikes to commute to and from work, both eastbound and westbound, who would be affected. We said, nope, can't have the e-bikes in this park. Go turn around. So I do think that we should put up signs banning the use of e-bikes in a subset of Mercer Island parks. Example would be Mercer Dale, but we need to look at where does it make sense to allow it and not allow it. I think the police should be allowed to impound an e-bike to protect public safety and ensure compliance to the law. The civil infractions, similar to what we've done for the e-motorcycle legislation, the infractions should escalate with subsequent violations. And I think parents should be held responsible for the actions of their minor children in riding e-bikes. And so I look forward to seeing the staff's draft of this legislation as it comes together, and let's work together and make this a good one. Thanks for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Becker, is that an old hand you had? Okay. Councilmember Reynolds.
This one is just a question, some stuff I didn't understand from today. From what I understand, we're proposing infractions, and I think you're telling me that infractions for those 15 and younger are handled by King County. But King County doesn't tend to want to prosecute these things. So do we need cooperation of the King County prosecutor to levy these fees? Or can we just do that anyway and collect it through other means?
We'll be handling that ourselves on Mercer Island.
And similarly to that, will we be able to impound a bicycle without cooperation of the King County Court on this?
Yes, we'll be implementing our own impound procedures here on Mercer Island.
Okay. Thank you. That's the answer I wanted to hear.
Okay.
Mayor, I have one more. If there's nobody else, then I'll be done. I promise.
I will hold you to that.
Is it good to go?
Go ahead.
This relates to 93150. I'm concerned about this section because of what's not done. There's some language in there that I don't like, and I would ask the staff to consider addressing this in the next round because it basically says regular bicycles are not allowed in parks except along roads. And I don't think we have any roads in parks, or at least not very many. And it says, or streets or other designated areas. And I don't know that what's a designated area. I presume the intent is not to ban bikes, just regular bikes, let alone e-bikes, from trails in our parks, notably including the Aubrey Davis Park that Councilmember Weinberg mentioned. So I think that language really needs to be cleaned up.
I just want to make sure, just to be clear, that the text that's not underlying is existing.
I understand.
Okay.
But I think that what's existing is not consistent with what I think our intent is.
Okay. I'm not sure I agree with that. We do limit where bikes can go in parks. I, again, I'm not prepared with the park rules in front of me this evening. I know earlier today, our city attorney did say that we might want to take another look at this and see if there's an opportunity for some additional improvements. But I'd like to have the Parks team here to talk about what's actually happening in practice and what our park rules say for consistency.
I think that's fair. It's a topic that merits further discussion. Certainly, I would think most of the paved trails, bikes should be okay. I think some of the unpaved trails, bikes should be okay, but on the grass, there probably shouldn't be. And finding some way to make that clear and everybody to make sure we understand the rules are, I think it's pretty important.
And I think you just summarized the issue that we're having with bikes and e-bikes is that the island is pretty divided on that. Many people want walking paths that are free from bikes. Others rely on those paths for transportation. And so we have some challenges ahead of us. And this is just one of the reasons why the e-bike regulations and potential solutions did not come tonight because we have a lot more work to do.
Okay.
Okay. So speaking of more work to do, is September 16th still on track for second reading? Do you need more time?
I, if you could just pass the motion, setting it for second reading and leave the date out, Mr. Mayor, I will do my best to make that turn. But it usually only gives us about seven days. And if we need extra time, I will move it to the first meeting in October.
Okay. Counsel, is there a motion to schedule ordinance number 25C-24 for second reading and adoption?
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Weinberg, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum. Councilmember Reynolds, old hand.
I do have some comments to make before we vote, if we can. Now appropriate time?
Yep. Now is the time.
Okay. I want to thank the staff for taking the time to address this. This has been something talked about in the community for a long time. It's clearly important from a safety consideration, both for bikers and those that they interact with. So I'm glad we're taking this up. It's an important first step, not the only step, no doubt about it. And I just want to encourage everybody involved to do everything and to address the real problem problem in a way that does not unduly hamper responsible bike riders, commuters, recreational riders, what have you. I think that's very important. I think Jim Stanton during the comments today had a, had a very interesting observation, which I agree with, that we're not going to solve now, but that we need to have on our radar through the pedestrian and bicycle facilities plan update, that we just don't have enough bicycle infrastructure on this island, and that's part of the reason why we have so much pedestrian and bicycle conflict. Having said that, even if we had more bike lanes and protective bike lanes, I don't think we want e-motocycles in those lanes either. So this, this is a broader issue than just that, and I look forward to continuing discussions.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. City Clerk, please call a roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Weiger.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Councilmember Androw.
Aye.
And Councilmember Becker.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Motion passes. I had previously said that that was our final item of business, but it's not. There's one more, which will be AB 6758, the Business License Code Amendment, ordinance number 25C dash 22, first reading. Welcome Chief of Administration LA Speitz and Finance Director Matt Moore.
Good evening, Mayor Neese, Members of the Council, and City Manager Bond. I'm Matt Moore, your Finance Director, and I'll be walking through our slide deck this evening. Please let me know when you can see my opening slide.
Got it.
Great. All right. I'm going to be brief this evening, walk through seven slides to introduce our first reading and ordinance with proposed updates to chapter 5.01 of the city's municipal code regarding business licenses. All entities engaging in business within Mercer Island city limits are required to obtain a Mercer Island endorsement on their Washington State business license. By way of background, state legislation passed in 2018 that was intended to standardize and simplify the administration of municipal general business licensing to essentially improve the, the business climate. The Association of Washington Cities formed a working group at the time to draft standard rules for business licensing across the state. And in 2019, the city enrolled with the State Department of Revenue's Business Licensing Service, who has administered all business licensing for the city since. The annual fee in the city's, the outline in the city's fee schedule for a new business license or a renewal is $30, which was last updated in 2006. Even though businesses go through the State Business Licensing Service, Mercer Island staff still oversee Mercer Island endorsements for all new business licenses, which informs what businesses may owe local business and occupation taxes each fiscal year. Per state law, this standard language, or what is known among the AWC crew as the model ordinance, was again updated in 2024 by a similar AWC working group. The business community had the opportunity to review and sign off on the model ordinance updates that include, first, a new minimum threshold for out-of-city businesses and a clear framework for increasing the minimum threshold by the rate of inflation. Staff also cleaned up language in chapter 5.001 for council to consider this evening. As I mentioned earlier, because the Washington State Department of Revenue's Business Licensing Services manages all business licensing for the city and most cities in, in Washington, the city is required to adopt these code changes by mid-October to meet the state's 75-day notice requirement for any changes to city business licenses. So they're going to take effect by the January 1st, 2026 deadline. The main change in the update includes a one-time increase to a higher threshold exemption to $4,000 for businesses from the current $2,000 exemption threshold. The code also includes new language to update this minimum threshold exemption every four years based on the cumulative rate of inflation as measured by PPIU. And it sets both a floor and a ceiling for the annual adjustment, rounding it to the nearest $100 for ease of administration. Finance, administrative services, and a legal team saw this code amendment as an opportunity to clarify and clean up language that is, is out of date with current practice. So for example, we, we updated references to the Business Licensing Authority from the city clerk to the finance director, which is our current practice. The code removes any ambiguity to make clear per state law that, that all businesses must comply with business licensing rules regardless of their location. And we remove language that is no longer relevant based on, on current state rules and practice. We proposed the updated information so that in the instance of an appeal, that the appeal would be taken to the hearing examiner in place of the city council, which is as the code is currently written. Our intention tonight is to answer any questions about the proposed revisions to chapter 5.01 and schedule second reading of the respective ordinance at the September 16th council meeting. Our recommendation this evening is for the city council to set ordinance number 25C dash 22 for second reading and adoption at the September 16th city council meeting. And with that, I will stop sharing and open it up for questions.
Okay. Any questions, counsel? Nope. All right. Is there a motion to set ordinance number 25C 22 for second reading and adoption at September 16, 2025 city council meeting?
Zulut.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Weinberg, seconded by Councilmember Weiger. Any discussion? Not seeing any. Please call a roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Weiger.
Aye.
Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Councilmember Becker.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
And Councilmember Androw.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Motion passes. We move to other business and planning schedule, and we welcome City Manager Jesse Bond.
Mr. Mayor, no updates from me.
Okay. Counsel, any absences to report?
Yeah, I may miss the next meeting. It remains to be seen.
September 16th. All right. Councilmember reports. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Nothing to report.
I have nothing to report. Councilwoman Weiger.
Yep. So next open, monthly open lunch will be at 12:00 PM on Sunday, September 21st at the Anis Thai Restaurant at 7691 Southeast 27th. As always, all are welcome. It is an open agenda, news, sports, weather, humor, even questions about city business. What do you know? All I ask is that everybody please show your respects to the chef by ordering some food and/or beverage, and let me know if you're coming so I can reserve a large enough table.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Androw.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Becker.
Nothing to report.
Okay. The next hybrid meeting of the city council is scheduled for Tuesday, September 16, 2025, at 5:00 PM. The time is now 7:15 PM. The city council will go into executive session for approximately 30 minutes to discuss with legal counsel pending a potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101I. As a reminder, to city council, please stay seated until the city staff has terminated the broadcast. Good evening, and thank you for joining us tonight.